Would I call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order? Please stand for our invocation and presentation of colors and the National Anthem.
On our high and high formation, oh, turn, arch. Charge, hope, one base. Charge, hope. Carry, colors. Ready, cut.
We will now have our invocation. Lord, we thank you for this day, this opportunity to gather here tonight. We thank you for the many blessings that we all enjoy. We thank you for the opportunities that we have, all of us, to take part in the education of our young people. Be with us tonight in all decisions that are made, provide us wisdom and guidance, and may everything that takes place here tonight be pleasing in your sight. In your holy name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Praise and colors.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Carry, colors. Ready, cut. Ready, cut. Right base. Oh, hey, arch.
At this time, we want to thank the students from Myrtle Grove Middle School with Principal Sam Highsmith in attendance and the students for singing the National Anthem under the instructor Caitlin Baden. And there's a mic up there. If you would have the group give us their name and the grade they're in, please.
My name's Maya Porzio and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Parker Tanner and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Carly DeCilio and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Hallie Habrat and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Donna Andrews and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Lily Dahl and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Stefania Lanzagorda and I'm in eighth grade.
Thank you. The instructor's name, Caitlin Baden. Am I pronouncing that right, Caitlin? Okay. And Mr. Highsmith, we appreciate you being here tonight. Also, at this time, we'll take the microphone and pass it. The colors were posted tonight by Ashley NJROTC Unit, Principal Jackson Norville, the instructors, Sergeant Major Stanley Hollins, and Chief Thomas Frost. I saw the chief. Chief, appreciate you being here. If the cadets will give us their name, rank, serial number, date of birth. Now, we'll stop on just name and the grade you're in. And throw in your rank, too, those that don't understand the Navy ranks. Is the mic not working? If you'd pass the mic down, please.
I'm Cadet Bennett. I am in ninth grade and I am a Seaman Apprentice.
I'm Cadet Lee. I'm also in ninth grade and I'm a Cadet Seaman Apprentice.
I'm Cadet Stafford and I am in ninth grade and I am a Seaman Recruit.
I'm Cadet Bradley. I'm in 11th grade and I am a Petty Officer First Class.
Thank you very much for being here. We have a special treat tonight, and at this time, I'd ask Dr. Hickey if he would like to introduce our next group.
Yes, they're getting rid of me sooner than I anticipated. As an outgoing board member this evening, I asked if the Roland Grice Chorus, of which my daughter is a member, would come and sing for the board for my outgoing meeting. So at this point, at this time, would the Roland Grice Chorus, under the instruction of Mr. Melton, come up and be singing a song about peace and unity?
the Board of Education by Clerk of Court Jan Kennedy. Is there a motion to? Oh, there's a thing. How does this favor please say, "I, and I ask the audience to please remain seated during this time." Mr. Melton, the instructor from Roland Grice, if you would take the microphone and have everyone introduce themselves and tell us what grade they're in, then if you'd like to say a word or two about the song, feel free to.
My name's Kaylin and I'm in seventh grade.
My name is Jenna. I'm in sixth grade.
My name's Ashley and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Serenity and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Victoria and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Slen and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Adrian and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Alina and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Ayla and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Joy and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Sandy. I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Zoe. I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Katia. I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Mia and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Taylor and I'm sixth grade.
I'm Tanner and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Jack and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Andrew and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Olivia and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Riley and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Leah. I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Riley and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Sally and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Emma. I'm in sixth grade.
And I'm Noah Melton. I'm the chorus director at Roland Grice Middle School. Very privileged to get to be here tonight and be with you and share our talents of our students with you. The song that we chose to sing for you has a world languages song, and it talks about congregation, cooperation, unity, community. When you saw them say "ekta," they put their finger in the air, and if you noticed, that is the universal symbol for oneness, unity, and that is the Hindu word for "ekta" is unity and oneness. So, thank you very much for allowing us to be here, and we look forward to maybe singing here again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I can assure you, that was the highlight of the evening. It always is at our board meetings when we have our colors presented by one of our local high school groups and then the National Anthem performed by one of our schools. That's always the highlight of the meeting. This time, I would like to do a special recognition, and for this recognition, I'd like for the board members, if you would, please, if you would line up in front here, and Dr. Hickey, if you would please come forward. At this time, the board members and I would like to recognize Dr. Derek Hickey for his years of service on the New Hanover County Board of Education. Dr. Hickey has served on the board since 2010. During that time, he has participated in several different committees, including the Legion Stadium, Budget Development, Parks and Gardens, and the Board of Education Scholarship Committees. He also played a key role in the district's recent flu prevention strategies. We will miss his intelligence, wit, and I think most of all, Dr. Hickey, your sense of humor, and we want to thank you for everything. And I'd like to read the plaque that will be presented to Dr. Hickey. It's in recognition of your years of service, Derek G. Hickey, M.D., New Hanover County Board of Education, 2010 to 2014. And just as a little personal aside, I first met Dr. Hickey, I don't know how many years ago it was, we were both on the Parks, well, it was Parks and Rec then, now it's Parks and Gardens Board, and I was super impressed with this young man. What I noticed was, when he spoke, when you were discussing things, he always took his time and thought about it, and when he spoke, people listened to it. So, I was really impressed with you then, and I was impressed with the work that you've done on the school board, and look forward to future things that you will accomplish.
I want to say a few words, and I'll keep it brief. It's funny how that picture will look very happy when you post it on the website, but I'm actually sort of sad to be leaving this group. I didn't think I'd be choked up tonight, but obviously I am, so bear with me. First, I'd like to thank the board I served with. It was a privilege to work with so many fine people. They weren't just board members, they were friends and mentors. But at this point, I'd like you to indulge me, to give you all three little bits of advice. And when I say indulge me, I mean, you taught me this advice. I just want to remind you what you taught me. When people ask me about the Board of Education, I tell them that I didn't always agree with these people on issues, but I always knew that each one of them had the best interests of the students of New Hanover County at heart as they saw it. And so my first bit of advice is, when you disagree with a fellow board member, remember that they're just doing what they think is best for the students, so be respectful. The second bit of advice is, and it's obvious, in order to win a vote, you need four votes. But real leadership involves speaking to your other board members and bringing them along. It's always better to have more people agree, and again, through discussion. It was very rare that we passed things four to three. So, leadership involves bringing people along. And the third bit of advice is that sometimes when things get contentious and you lose a vote, get over it, because it's not personal, and you need to be able to work together on the issues that are important to the students of New Hanover County. And so these are the three basic lessons that you taught me when I was on this board, and I think it's always wise to remember those three things. Next, I'd like to turn my attention to the senior staff. I don't know that I gave you as much credit as I should have over the years. When I asked you questions, it was because I wanted maybe to spur people to really understand where they were coming to from an issue. But sitting up here on the board, you know, the board receives credit for all the accomplishments of the district, and over the four years I've been on this board, we've accomplished some great things. Graduation rates have increased, SATs have increased, just to name two of the academic ones which are most important to me. And of course, when things go badly, the board receives the blame. But the reality is, it's the senior staff and it's the teachers working hard and tirelessly every day in anonymity that makes most of these things happen. So, I'd like to thank each of you for making my term on the board be more about the credit I received for the great things we were doing, rather than the blame we could have received if you weren't doing your job so well. So, thank you for making us look good, and you all need to remember that. In particular, I'd like to thank one member of the senior staff. You know, every organization needs a person that you can go to when there is a problem. No matter how difficult or contentious the problem, there's someone to tap and that they'll take care of that problem. And that person on the senior staff is Dr. Holiday. You know, over these last four years, I don't know of a single issue that a board member brought to Dr. Holiday that he didn't just say, "I'll take care of that," and he did. And as soon as you told him there was a problem and he set on it, it was fixed. And he would get back to you on the resolution, but he didn't need to, because you knew that once you put that ball in his court, he ran it down, you know, ran it down the court and slammed it in. And so, this whole organization would not work as well without the efforts of Dr. Holiday. I'd like to thank you, and I think, I hope you stay for a long time, because there'll be a major gap. You know, one of the things about people is, under their job description, someone asked me Dr. Holiday's job description once, and I thought, I mean, I don't know, it's just about everything. Anytime there's a problem, it gets thrown in his court. And I guess a year ago, we actually appointed him Deputy Superintendent, because, I mean, you know, he was doing it all, not all, sorry, Tim, but he was doing so much of it anyway that we had to give him a, we had to give him a title. Lastly, as I depart, it's bittersweet, I pulled it together, I'd like to welcome my replacement, Mr. Bruchell. If I had to pick someone personally to replace me, I could not have picked a better person than Mr. Shell. The converse is that you are indeed very lucky to be working with such a wonderful group of people, both on the board and on the senior staff, and you will now be in charge of the students of New Hanover County, and I'm putting this charge on you to take care of this organization and these students, including my two own children. So, good luck, best of luck, best wishes. And thank all of you for a great four years. I've learned a lot about education. I've learned a lot about community service, and I want to thank all of you for all you've done for me over the years.
I'd like to move to recess for the purpose of swearing in newly elected members of the Board of Education by Clerk of Court Jan Kennedy. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Oh, there's a thing. How does this favor please say, "I," and I ask the audience, and these will be by Clerk of Court Jan Kennedy, and I ask the audience to please remain seated during this time.
Mr. Shell, I believe you have the first honor, and whoever you'd like to hold the Bible, Would you like to make introductions?
Sure, be happy to. This is my wife Cindy, my daughter April, my son Michael, my first cousin chose not to come up here, Kathleen. It's an honor to be here. Tony, raise your hand, please. That's April's husband. Becky, where's Becky? Becky's hiding with Ella around the corner. Okay, now you've been called.
She needs to come up here. Okay, if you place your left hand on the Bible for me and raise your right, I'm gonna say if you just state your name, because I know, I'm just gonna say.
I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God, I state your name. Do further solemnly swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, I state your name. Do further solemnly swear that I will perform the duties of office as a member of the Board of Education, New Hanover County, North Carolina, to the best of my knowledge, skill, and ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
I can assure you, that was the highlight of the evening. It always is at our board meetings when we have our colors presented by one of our local high school groups and then the National Anthem performed by one of our schools. That's always the highlight of the meeting. This time, I would like to do a special recognition, and for this recognition, I'd like for the board members, if you would, please, if you would line up in front here, and Dr. Hickey, if you would please come forward. At this time, the board members and I would like to recognize Dr. Derek Hickey for his years of service on the New Hanover County Board of Education. and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. I state your name. Do further solemnly swear that I will perform the duties of office as a member of the Board of Education for New Hanover County, North Carolina, to the best of my knowledge, skill, and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am?
No, it's fine.
That's it, Mr. Higgins, thank you. All right, Ms. Kavanaugh, you want to introduce who you have with you?
This is my daughter, Becca Kavanaugh-Swayne, and I'm so proud she could be here with me tonight. And we got two Bibles, because one for each daughter.
Okay, if you'll place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right, that's okay.
I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God. I state your name. Do further solemnly swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. I state your name. Do further solemnly swear that I will perform the duties of office as a member of the Board of Education of New Hanover County, North Carolina, to the best of my knowledge, skill, and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Last but certainly not least. Thank you. Who do you have?
These two ladies, the, my wife Margie, who is truly one fortunate, lucky woman that, uh, come next month, January, we will be married 50 years. I know that's hard to believe. I know that's very hard to believe, even looking at me, but serving on the Board of Education does this to you. And then my daughter Gail, who is an outstanding educator in her own right, as a teacher in another county, but carrying on the tradition. And my son-in-law, my son-in-law, Ron, you should have come up, Ron Woodcock, who is fortunate enough to be in our family, married to my daughter. We also let him now, he's been in here while, we let him stand closer in, we don't put him on the end, so we can cut him out. We can't get rid of him in now. Oh, and pictures.
Are you done?
Photographs.
I got it, I got it. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God. I state your name. Do further solemnly swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. I state your name. Do further solemnly swear that I will perform the duties of office as a member of the Board of Education of New Hanover County, North Carolina, to the best of my knowledge, skill, and ability, so help me God.
Got tickled. Congratulations. Thanks, Judge.
Now, to call our meeting back to order from our recess, and turn it over to Dr. Markley.
All right, the one time a year, they let me run things. Next item on the agenda is the election of the chairperson. I will open the floor to nominations. I have a nomination for Don Hayes. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Lisa Eastep.
All right, do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
I have Don and Lisa. Do I hear any other nominations?
I mean, the nominations be closed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, nominations have been moved and closed. First vote will be in favor of closing nominations, so all those in favor, show of hands. Okay? Now, we'll do this by a showing of hands, so just so we can get a count, please raise your hands high, so we can see them. All those in favor of Don Hayes as chairman, please raise your hand. I have four votes. All those in favor of Lisa Eastep, please raise your hand. Three votes. By motion of four to three, Mr. Hayes is elected chair. Mr. Hayes, it's yours.
How short your tenure was, Dr. Markley.
Some jobs you don't want, and that's one.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll have the election of the vice chair. The floor is now open for nominations for board vice chair.
I move to nominate Tammy Kobel.
I move to nominate, oh, you need a second, I don't.
Second, okay.
I move to nominate Jeanette Nichols.
Second.
Any other nominations?
I move that nominations be closed.
Second.
Show of hands for closing nominations. They're closed. At this time, we will vote in the order in which they were nominated. First, Tammy. Three votes. Jeanette Nichols. Four votes. Vice chair is Ms. Jeanette Nichols. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve both elections by acclamation.
I second.
There's been a motion to approve both elections by acclamation. Sort of, do you want to just ask for a show of hands?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve both.
Please clarify what you mean by that.
Means that, meaning that it goes from being a split decision to a unanimous decision.
Well, yes, if you made a motion as a second, then if you agree with it, fine, you'd vote for it. If you don't agree with it, you wouldn't vote for it, correct? Parliamentary, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, there's been a motion to, by acclamation, to approve the two elections. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, five, those opposed. Five to two. Okay, next item on the agenda, Ms. Adams, if you'd call the roll, please.
Donald F. Hayes.
Here.
Jeanette F. Nichols.
Here.
Janice A. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Tammy J. Kobel.
Here.
Lisa Eastep.
Here.
Edward B. Higgins.
Here.
Bruce T. Shell.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Next on, on the agenda, item five is approval of the agenda. Any additions, deletions from the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's approved. Item six, approval of the minutes. Item A, special meeting minutes from October the 21st, 2014. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Yes, sir. Inasmuch as I wasn't party to that, I'd like to withdraw from the vote.
You just want to abstain from both votes on the minutes, that's fine. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And one extension, Ms. Adams. Item B, special meeting minutes from November the 18th, 2014.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's approved. Item seven is recognition of achievement.
Good evening, everyone. Our first recognition for this evening goes to Ms. Claire McFaul, who is the social worker at Sunset Park Elementary School. Ms. McFaul has been named the 2014 North Carolina School Social Worker of the Year by the North Carolina School Social Work Association. Her dedicated support of students, families, and staff contributes to the successful academic outcomes of not only Sunset Park students, but all students in New Hanover County schools. Would Ms. McFaul please come forward, so we can recognize you? And we would also ask that her principal, Ms. Jackie Jefro, and other Sunset Park staff who are here this evening, as well as some of our school social workers, I just have to do that, Lisa, would you please stand? She has a strong support of people here. Congratulations, Ms. McFaul. So, in addition to having the state's top social worker, we have two of our schools who are being recognized this evening for being Title I reward schools. And those schools are Castle Hain and Pine Valley, Pine Valley Elementary Schools. And they are among 78 North Carolina schools honored by DPI as Title I reward schools for the 2014-15 school year. These schools were selected because they are among the top 10% of Title I schools in the state, having either high performance or high progress for all student groups and subgroups on statewide assessment over the years. And what that means is that they've done a great job with their various subgroups, and closing the achievement gap. So, at this time, I would ask that Principal Cindy Bliss of Castle Hain Elementary School, and Principal Higgins is not here, but I believe Ms. Anderson is here to represent her, if you would come forward. And also, we have a special guest, one of my favorite people, our former Castle Hain principal, Ms. Margaret Dickens, is also here. And so, we want to recognize you as part of this, too. So, would those principals please come forward? So, we will start with Castle Hain. We'll start with Castle Hain. Okay, and Ms. Anderson, representing Principal Rebecca Higgins Opgram for Pine Valley. Congratulations to our Title I reward schools. And finally, this evening, we would like to recognize the Landfall Foundation, thanks to our vice chairman, Ms. Nichols. Since its inception in 1995, the foundation has raised and contributed over $3 million to Wilmington nonprofit organizations, including many grants to New Hanover County schools. In 2014 alone, the Landfall Foundation has presented grant checks totaling over $50,000 to support our school district. So, Mr. Hamlet and a member of the grant committee, Ms. Gibson, thank you for being here, and thank you so much for all you do on behalf of New Hanover County schools.
Next item on the agenda is our call to the audience. These are agenda-related items. We've had one individual to sign up at this time, and please be reminded that we do have a three-minute time limit. Mr. Frank Carter.
Thank you very much for giving me a few minutes. I'm the parent of two children at College Park Elementary School. And in the past, I've had some conversation with board members, and I've had some emails with you, back and forth. And one of the concerns we have, of course, is that, and we're very excited to get a new school, don't think we're not, that's a, that's a very big deal for us, and will be for my two children, as well as the 500 other kids that are attending College Park. One of the problems we're going to run into, I think, is going to be the, the distance factor with the replacement of us at the Rock Church location. Now, I know the two-year project that was looked at originally was replaced with a three-year project, so that we would be displaced for three total years. And I think that our school, our school's population may find that a very difficult thing to deal with for that period of time. And we're asking you to take a look at alternative two, which you have presented, and just try to keep us there for two years, rather than for three. It's, it's, it's a, a population that I've come to know, the students and the parents in that, in that neighborhood and that area, they've become very close. And we're also blessed with a number of volunteers. And our volunteer base, I'm a watchdog myself, the volunteer base, I'm afraid, is going to deteriorate at some point, especially since we're utilizing members of the church that's next door to College Park School right now. And we will, we'll be using volunteers from all over, but the Sidbury Road location is a long way to go to volunteer. It's a long way to go for PTA, for, to see kids' classrooms and that sort of thing. So, we're asking you, if you would, to consider holding this to a two-year commitment, rather than a three-year commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item nine, administrative personnel.
None this evening.
To Dr. Markley. Item 10, under head start, report from the liaison, Mr. Edward Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have, I don't know if you can open it or not, I could not get mine to actually open, but it's up on the board. But I'm not going to read it to you, but I, I would like to summarize some things that are in the, I assume they're in the board. But I'm not going to read it to you, but I, I would like to summarize some things that are in the, I assume they're in the board. Yeah, well, I mean, I, um, some basic information. There is funded enrollment for two hundred and sixty students, of which a hundred and five are three-year-olds, a hundred and fifty-five are four-year-olds. And there is currently a hundred and forty-five waiting list of three-year-olds, that their attendance is ninety-two percent. Apparently, one of the pressing needs is that special needs children. There are currently twenty-four special needs children. Apparently, the grant or the federal government is saying that we need to have twenty-six. So by the end of the year now, so obviously, there's going to need to be an attempt to try identify at least two more special needs children for this program. Initially, there was denial of funding for transportation and a restraint, restraint system. However, apparently, the federal government has found some money somewheres. And so they are going, we're going to receive funding in the amount of a hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. No, I'm sorry, that's the wrong number, a hundred and twenty-three thousand seventy-four dollars that they have, have agreed, in fact, actually, it's been submitted, it's been received, but we have to still put in an application. And so, Mr. Chairman, you're going to be asked to sign a request for that, for some additional money that has been approved. Some of the things that the, they have found that they needed, updated shelving, manipulation areas, carpeting, blocks, and play materials to bring the current facility up to standards, a supplemental curriculum to reduce impulsive and aggressive behavior, and that the need to supply car restraints and other ongoing supplies, which apparently have cost more than they initially anticipated. They're looking for iPads, smart boards, and early learning software, teacher strategy curriculums, and an online assessment program. The cost of these run eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for the social and emotional supplement and carpets. The restraint system, which includes two hundred and eighty seats and ninety-five straps, runs thirty-five thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars, for a total of a hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars, which a application for federal assistance has been prepared. And you will be asked to, they're asking that you sign it to formally ask for the money, although the money's already been received. So that's my report for this month on the Head Start program.
Why do they want it even though they've already received the?
Because the federal government requires it.
Okay.
I have a question.
That was explained to me, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Sir.
What happens if you don't have twenty-six children? You have twenty-four now, you need twenty-six to meet federal criteria?
I'm not altogether sure. I mean, to be honest with you, the report says that we were supposed to, apparently in the application, we said we would have twenty-six. And I, I suspect, and I would defer to anybody who might know more, that we probably could request a waiver to some set time to be able to meet that.
Mr. Higgins.
Mr. Chair, our Head Start Director is here, she can answer that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you out there, I'm sorry.
Chairman, if you'll come to the mic. And if, for our newest board member, you'll introduce yourself.
Good evening, I'm Shannon Smiles, Director of Early Childhood Education Program. And in regards to the question with the disability, first of all, it takes, you know, some time to identify these students. And these are the students that have individual education plans. So we have a handful of them that are in the referral process, and we have up to ninety days. My estimation would probably be we're going to end with a lot more than twenty-six. And you can receive a waiver, but we would like to continue to provide, you know, those services, so.
So if you don't have twenty-six, do you lose funding?
No, sir.
Okay.
And it's recommended ten percent of your total enrollment. That's how they got the figure.
Thank you.
What, what exactly do you, do you mean by special needs? Are we talking physical needs? Are we talking emotional needs? Can you sort of enlighten me on, on what that means?
An individual education plan, which could be OT, could be speech and language, could be DD, developmentally delayed, any of those categories, such as K through twelve, same identifications. Okay. So if they were come, would come to do an audit, then you would have the paperwork for your I, for your individual plans.
Any other questions?
Are you asking for approval to receive the funding at this point? Is that at a later time?
I am asking simply that the Chair sign the application to the federal government to formalize these funds that we have already received.
I see, and I was just looking at the application, there was thirty thousand that would be a match from the school, is that right?
Correct.
And is that currently in the budget, or is that something you would ask for?
Ms. Smiles?
Originally, when we had applied for an additional grant in August, we had put the, the match, which is what we were going to pay, we were going to pay for those seats out of, actually, indirect costs that came back to us from the Head Start program, but we were going to pay for it out of that. So we were just using the match in this new app, the same money in this new application. So it's a smaller amount than we had originally included in the first, the first application was over two hundred thousand that we applied for. That was denied, so we still have the money budgeted for this other.
As a, as the grantee, we, we take a percentage to manage the fund, so we were taking that, part of that percentage of federal money to cover that thirty thousand. So it's not, it's not local money or state money, it's still the federal money coming in.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, thank you, Ms. Higgins. Item B, Head Start Policy Council Bylaws for School Year 2014-15, Appendix A, Dr. Smith.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear what you were saying, would you repeat it, please?
Yes, sir, I apologize. I would ask for the Board's approval for the Head Start Policy Council Bylaws.
So we had a motion, second.
These were on last month's agenda. Our attorney had a couple of questions about them, he, we pulled them in order to revise them, and he has gone in, and Mr. Bullet, at this point, you're satisfied with the?
Yes, we revised them, and they are acceptable, from my point of view, from a legal perspective. Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Approved. Next item on the agenda, item eleven, under Information. This is for information only. Item A, Policies for First Reading, Mrs. Nichols.
The first policy is from the Division of Human Resources. This is Policy sixty-two thirty-three. We're asking that the policy be removed from the Board of Education manual. And Dr. Wellmers, would you like to explain why?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, thank you. The awarding of career status was fairly well taken out by the General Assembly this past year when they removed career status as for teachers. We have replaced that policy with sixty-two thirty-six, which is employment of teachers without career status, which will enable us to move on to a contract preparation for those teachers. So we no longer need the awarding of career status as a policy.
Thank you, Dr. Wellmers. Any questions?
Any questions on that one? Because this is for information tonight.
The next policy is from Instruction, and it is Policy seventy-four ten, the grading system. And this is updates, but I'm going to ask Dr. Smith if she will share with us.
Yes, thank you. The district has engaged in work around grading systems for the last three years. We've put together teacher committees and looked at our current grading system, and the changes here reflects the recommendations of those committees. Also, school improvement teams were able to offer their suggestions as well.
Any questions for Dr. Smith?
I, I have not necessarily a question, I just, as I said, for some reason, I cannot get my, my appendix to, to open, but.
We can't either.
Well, my only question is, you know, there's been a lot of discussion of this ten-point grading scale, and the impact it's going to have on seniors, or I think even juniors maybe, and the other, the other students, and I know there's been some questions raised about the, whether or not they ought to do this, or whether or not it's kind of a grade inflation-type situation. I just want to make sure that we haven't put into this policy something about what constitutes an A.
This policy really deals more with issues, not with the actual grading, but some of the practices related to that.
Okay.
For those who, just a little history for those, the state has changed the weighting formula for courses. It used to be six, five, four, six for an AP course, four for an honors, I mean, five for an honors, and four for a regular course. That will stay in place for students who are currently enrolled, but for next year's freshmen, they're going to a different weighting scale that takes some of that, that cuts down some of that gap between the regular and the non-er's course. And along with that, the state has decided to switch to a ten-point grading scale. We currently use a seven-point grading scale. And there's been some concern that you're going to have a seven-point grading scale for existing students and a ten-point grading scale for new students. And so you may have a freshman in a class with an upperclassman, and you've got two grading scales. The superintendent quarterly meeting is happening this week, and I'll be attending that, and that's something the state superintendent will be addressing. So that'll be an issue that'll come forward to us as a policy change later on, but the ones that are here in, in this policy do not impact that discussion.
Okay, I just want to be sure.
So has there been, are you saying that there might be some discussion in that meeting that you're going to be having?
Yes.
Okay. So you'll update us then?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
The next set of policies come from Student Support Services. The first one is Student Attendance, eighty-two twelve. And I'm going to ask Dr. Holliday if he will share the changes or additions to this policy.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. The substantive change is on page two of five, and it addresses educational opportunities when students can be absent from school and excused, and it further defines what that is. The principals have some discretion about this, but this policy now will spell out a little bit more about what would be required for a student to receive an excused absence for such an educational opportunity. It kind of eliminates some of the things that, that some schools may have been doing and some schools may have not been doing. Oftentimes, as you've heard, parents taking children on vacations and calling them educational experiences, and they may or may not be. This further defines that. The other thing that it does, members of the board, is adds in, as you can see the little caveat underneath it, and this came out of our discussion and policy, something that was done some time ago, but this further codifies this and puts it into board policy. And that would allow juniors and seniors at our high schools to post-secondary visits. In other words, they can go to, to, they can have two college days, both, one, but two days as a junior and two days as a senior, and we actually count them present if they do this ahead of time and bring back some information to the principal or to the teachers, saying that they have actually attended the college, had been to the college day. We used to do this many years ago, it wasn't a part of board policy, it was just understood. The board believes this is a good idea to do this. And if, of course, a student has the opportunity to visit other colleges other than just the two, they would get an excused absence, but they would not be counted present. So this is the substantive change. Madam Vice Chair, there's one other little piece, if we go on to page three of five. And again, it, it further codifies what some, some excused absences would be, and some of the things that, that students would be acceptable to, to not be there. It enlists, it adds into that first paragraph, college visits and educational opportunities. So that essentially is the substantive change to this policy.
Any questions for Dr. Holliday?
The next policy that, continuing with Dr. Holliday, is the school-sponsored fundraising activities. This is Policy eighty-five fifty.
Yes, ma'am, thank.
Before you start speaking, if you'll just go into the website.
Mine's frozen. It won't let me do anything.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Just go in through the website and on the, touch School Board at the web address, and then Agenda's on the far left.
I did, I did that, and it's just still, much too long.
I miraculously have it.
Anyway.
Sorry, Dr. Holliday.
That's all right, that's all right, that's all right. Thank you, members of the board, Madam Vice Chair. This, this simply is one of the things that was caught by our internal auditor. And if you go to number six, it's simply a way to address this crowdsourcing that you've all heard about, where teachers can go online, or folks can go online and raise money online. And one of the things we want to guard against is, is something that's not approved by the principal, and we don't know what we're getting, and we don't know what we're getting into, and we may be committing to things that we really don't either have need of or we can't support. So this simply reclassifies the number, the number six to include any online web venues that someone would go to, and that would still have to require the approval of the, of the principal. Whereas before, we didn't specify that, but it certainly was implied. But now, this has become, as I know you all seen it in the media, this is all a very popular way of raising funds. And one of the things it also does is it guards, it kind of guards our brand a little bit, because sometimes people will put, when they're raising money in the crowdsourcing, they'll put things about a school that may or may not be true, or to magnify something, just to make it sound like, I really need, we really need the money. And it may not be exactly true what they're saying. So we want to be able to monitor that and, and control it a little bit so that we can not only support what we're raising money for, we can also kind of guard what people are saying about us.
I have a question. What up there says, well, two things. Number one, I understand school-sponsored organizations, but, and staff. I mean, if I've, if I'm a teacher and I want to take a group to Europe, can I go on and, and do that? And where does it say I have to have the principal's permission?
Well, any, any school-sponsored fundraising, anything would require the, would require the principal's approval at the school.
But I think we need to put that in there, because I, I think otherwise, somebody could interpret it as I do, that.
Thinking, we'll make sure that's in there, Ms. Higgins.
Okay, the other.
I think it's implied in there, but we'll make sure that it's in there.
Is it?
Yeah, number eleven says the principal must approve.
Yeah, okay, but.
In writing, any fundraising.
Does that, does that mean that all eleven of these things must exist for it to happen? I mean, if you, if you, in the abstract, number eleven is separate from number six. And my only concern is that must approve and writing any fundraising activities under scholarship, sponsorship by any school group. But I, I'm just concerned that if we don't, why not just add the word "approved by the principal" at, under number six?
We can do that.
I, I, I think that would just be much clearer. But then the other question becomes, I want to take a group to Europe. As a staff member, am I allowed to solicit funds to do that?
We currently, help me, my friend's sitting there. You can't go out of the country.
There is no international travel.
That's in policy, another policy.
Well, I, okay, I just use that as an example. Okay, let's say, I want to take a group to New York.
You've got to get your principal's approval for that.
But as a staff member, I could do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
If your principal approves it, yes, sir. In fact, that's done all the time.
Okay.
Many of our core groups at our high schools make those trips out of state, as do some of our other groups, but I'm fairly.
DC is a very, is a regular middle school trip.
Yeah.
All right. All right, I just wanted to be clear, I understood that.
Right, but we can add that for you, if that's okay, um, Ms. Nichols, we can put that in there.
The next policy is a new policy, and Dr. Holliday, I'll let you explain that one, please.
As you know, thank you, as you know, the General Assembly, um, requires now that we maintain emergency epinephrine, the EpiPens that you all are familiar with, uh, at each of our schools, and this policy simply codifies the general statute. We're required to have a board policy, and we're also required to do this. And we're in the process of doing this right now. The Health Department, um, was very helpful in getting us a grant for our K-12 schools. We did actually have to go out, and we're in the process of purchasing for our pre-Ks and, um, our, uh, young adult program that we have, because the grant would not cover that, so we had to purchase those. We have to have them available at all of our schools, and they have to be available for all events. So, um, it's going to be real interesting to see how this works. One of the interesting things about this is that when, um, we went out to try to fill, we got the prescriptions from the, um, Board of Pharmacy, who issued them to each school district. And when we had to go out, of course, the Health Department did it for our, for our K-12 schools, but when we had to go out and do it for our pre-K schools, uh, and, and, uh, our young adult program, when we went out to the pharmacy to try to get them filled, the pharmacy said, this is an illegal prescription, and you can't, you, you can't fill it because it doesn't have a person's name on it. You know, it was issued to the school system. And, um, even though my assistant had the general statute and the board policy and said, here's the general statute, and the guy said, well, I know about the general statute, I still can't do it. Of course, and we went to another pharmacy, said, they, they said, sure, we, we got it. So this is so brand-new that even, even though the Board of Pharmacy is issuing the prescriptions, it's so brand-new, and it's such a brand-new concept that, um, the actual implementation of it at the individual pharmacies all over the state is, um, well, it's a little suspect. So, right now, this, this law is one of those things that, uh, I don't know what's going to happen to it in the new session, because this kind of came out of, um, it's kind of blindsided everybody. Pardon me, and without the Health Department, we'd have had a tough time implementing it, and it's very expensive. Without the grant from the Health Department working with us, it would have been astronomically expensive. So just so you know, it's, um, even though it's required, this, this could wind up being very expensive if we, if we can't get the grant in the future, in getting the epinephrine at schools. Just thought you'd like to know that.
You say it has to be at every event?
Well, yeah, if we, you have to have access to it, just like our AEDs, just like the, the, um,
Defibrillators.
The, the defibrillators that we have in our schools, they're available if we need them at, at every event. These would be the same, and Mr. Spencer is working, um, with the schools to make sure that the AEDs and the epinephrine are in the, are in, are in close proximity. That way, we know we got our emergency supplies together if we need them. And the Health Department is working with us on the training of individuals, because there is some training involved in, certainly, you don't want people just running around hitting each other with EpiPens. I mean, so you have to, you have to have a little training for this. So there, there is some training involved.
This is a case of a law that has good intentions, but the implementation is a whole lot more complicated than, than the intentions.
Dr. Holliday, does that mean that anytime a class goes on a field trip, they have to have an EpiPen with them?
That's a very good question. Um, we won't have that, because we don't have them for the classes on the field trips. Um, if a student has, um, an emergency medical plan, they already have their epinephrine, and that would accompany that particular student. The intent, I believe, of this legislation was if you had somebody at your school that would go into anaphylaxis and you, and not have this, you have it available. But our children, who we already know have those conditions that require it, they already have that in their emergency medical plans, and they have the epinephrine at the school and are able to use it. But no, ma'am, we wouldn't have them on every field trip, because we only have one set at the school. We only have a, an adult EpiPen and a junior EpiPen for children under a certain age. So you have both those, and that's all you have at the school. So you wouldn't have it, it wouldn't be, if you have two or three groups going from your school, you wouldn't have it with every group, no ma'am. It just has to be at your school.
Well, it's quite common that people who've never had a problem with allergies develop one, and the first thing you know about it is when they're going into anaphylactic shock.
That's true, that's true.
We're fortunate, we've got a good partner with the health system to work with us. For some of our smaller counties that don't have that relationship with their, with their local health, I don't know how they're, how they're going to be able to implement parts of this.
But at any rate, you've got to have a policy, and we've already got the, we have already got the, um, the, the plan in place for, for implementing this. We just have to, you just, you're required under the general statutes to have a policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And the last for information is under the student assignment plan, on page nine. And Dr. Holliday, if you will explain the changes here or deletions.
Yes, ma'am, let me just get there. Um, we, um, just simply are eliminating some language, um, under the appeal process to match your, um, current practice. Um, we currently do not use a hearing officer. It's, when we have our, uh, appeal panel hearings, it is all board members, it's not a hearing officer. There's not that intermediate step, we've not done that, even though the general statute allows you to do that, and it's worked quite well. So this is, this is the intent of the board, and this is what we've been doing, and we're simply just asking that even though the student assignment plan is not actually policy, it is something that is approved by the board, and we treat it much like policy. So we won't, uh, to ask permission to remove that language, because we're not doing that, and you've not done that. So we, we, we're asking to remove that language.
And that concludes our, um, policies for first reading. Uh, Mr. Shell, if you have any additional questions or suggestions, if you will, um, notify Mrs. Adams, or certainly the superintendent, or when, one of the members of the policy committee, which would be Mrs. Koval, and Mrs. E Step, or me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Next on the agenda, item B, Snipes Year-Round Calendar Presentation, Appendix C, Dr. LaShawn Smith.
Well, they're coming forward, this is similar to what we did last year with Sunset Park, we wanted to go to year-round. They're going to be presenting this for information and questions tonight, and then it'll come to you with your January meeting as an action item.
Good evening. Um, as a part of the district's commitment to bring the highest quality of education to our students, our schools are always looking to creative and innovative ways to enhance instruction, um, gain student attention, and to reduce the learning loss due to non-instructional times, um, during non-instructional times. This evening, you will hear a presentation from Ms. Cindy Talbert, who's Principal of Snipes Academy of Arts and Design regarding year-round education. She is going to share with you a presentation about the desire of, of her school staff to adopt a year-round calendar for the 2016, 2017 school year. And so at this time, I'll present to you Ms. Cindy Talbert.
Good evening, thank you, board, thank you, Dr. Markley, for allowing me to represent Snipes Academy of Arts and Design. So LaShawn's going to be working the, the PowerPoint for us tonight. Uh, we are going to present our information about, uh, our proposal for going year-round. But before we go in that direction, I feel like it's very important for you all to know, uh, what we've been doing at Snipes Academy. So back in 2012, Snipes Academy was identified as one of the, uh, lowest-performing schools in the state. We were in the lowest five percent, and we were also the lowest in New Hanover County Schools as far as proficiency. So the district needed to make a choice about one of these tra, models for turnaround, turning around to school. Uh, the model that New Hanover County Schools chose was the transformation model. And with the transformation model, there are a lot of components, and we have embraced, embraced these components uh, throughout, uh, our transformation. One of the first things the school system needed to do was to replace the principal. So that was in 2012, and that was when, I think, uh, when I came on board, uh, with, uh, Snipes Academy of Arts and Design. From that point, we have a lot of things going on at Snipes Academy. And last year, we increased our proficiency from seventeen percent up to thirty-one percent, and we also exceeded expected growth, which we were very proud of. Because you all chose the transformation model, we qualified to apply for a school improvement grant. We received a one-point-eight million dollar grant. It was a, it's a three-year grant, we are in year two of that grant. And with that grant, uh, last year, we had seven interventions. We sort of condensed those interventions into five, uh, this year. So I'd like to go through what those five interventions are. The first one is our after-school acceleration, which is, we have an after-school program, uh, two days a week. We wanted to make that program more meaningful to our students and more meaningful to our staff. We had eighty slots last year, and we had a lot of students that were staying after school. So we wanted it to be very beneficial. So, we worked with, uh, LaShawn and Emma Jackson, and trying to figure out a way to make it, uh, focused so that we could use our arts integration piece in our after-school program. So we are, uh, have that in place, and that will be starting in January. Our second intervention is the utilization of the school administrative manager. I'm the only principal in New Hanover County, uh, in, using this process, and it has been an awesome process for me. It allows me to be the instructional leader at the school, and not just the leader of management issues. Um, this is the graph from last year. So part of the school administrative manager process is looking at the data where I'm spending my time. And it also relinquishes some of my responsibilities to first responders in our school, so that they can handle some of those. So if you look at the baseline, when the SAM process started, I was followed for three days, uh, and, uh, a young man documented what I was doing every five minutes for three days. And it was determined I was spending twenty-six percent of my time on instruction. So with the changes we had in place, I set a goal, which is the blue line. And, as you can see, I exceeded my, uh, goal every month, and we are on that trend this year as well. The third intervention that we have in place is our MTSS process. We piloted that for New Hanover County Schools like, last year, after a one-week training. We've received, uh, support from the district and from the state, uh, for implementation with that. This helps us to focus on, uh, our core instruction and making sure that we are re, reaching at least eighty percent of our students. And for the twenty percent that we're not reaching, uh, we are providing interventions and progress monitoring those students. Our fourth intervention is restructuring, extending the school day. Our school starts fifteen minutes, uh, earlier than other schools. We added on fifteen minutes to our instructional day. So our students start arriving at seven oh five in the morning, our instructional day begins at seven forty-five and goes till two thirty. To, um, to make sure that we are using that fifteen minutes wisely and protecting the fidelity of that, we start our morning broadcast right at seven forty-five. Then, school-wide, we might implement our mind-up program. It's a fifteen-week, uh, curriculum, where students are focused on some brain, learning how their brain works and helping them self-regulate. And we also have morning meeting, which promotes, promotes a positive climate in the classroom. And then we'll also have the after-school, uh, program. The fifth intervention is short-cycle assessment. Uh, our grade-level PLCs meet every Wednesday, they met every Wednesday last year. In third through fifth, this year, we have extended that to K-five. We look at pre-assessments, post-assessments, analyzing that data to help drive our instructional decisions. We have a team of three from the district that meet with us every Wednesday. Now, we have our challenges with the traditional calendar, and basically, our students are off ten weeks in the summertime. Ten weeks is a long time, but much of the learning time is lost. And when the students come back, we do a lot of re-teaching, a lot of re-teaching. So, our school improvement team wanted to look at what the advantages of a year-round calendar would do for our students. Students would retain more information, because they would have fifteen days off, as opposed to ten weeks. Teachers would spend more time on teaching the new material, they could do some pre-teaching. Interventions and remediation would be more meaningful, and teachers and students are more refreshed. We have two more advantages with the real, year-round calendar. Uh, the first one there is that we, teachers could have a little more control with some goal-setting with students, saying, you know, over this next three weeks during your break, uh, how about setting a reading goal? And when you come back, uh, we'll be able to, to talk about how you met that goal, as opposed to being gone for, uh, ten weeks in the summertime. And plus, our students would have more access to the library. Although we open our library in the summertime, uh, we don't get a lot of students coming into our school. So let's take a close look at the data. Data speaks a lot. This is, uh, TRC data, this is text reading comprehension, it measures comprehension. Students read, and then they are to, uh, answer questions about what they read. And if you're looking at the data, and I'm going to see if this little, I don't know if this will work or not. This is, can you scroll up a little bit more to see the bottom, LaShawn? Okay, this, BOY means beginning of the year, EOI is the end of the year. So at the beginning of the year, in 2012, thirteen, this was the proficiency level of, of our students. We worked with them for a year, we went up. They came back the next year, that's where they were at the beginning of the year. So we work, we teach, we assess, we get them back up. And then the summertime, this is where they were at the beginning of this school year. So you can see it's very difficult to grow our students and to retain, help them retain what they've learned. This is the composite, uh, this is also reading for M-class, this has to do with comprehension, comprehension, decoding, fluency. Once again, you can see the beginning of the year, uh, is, uh, low, we, we show growth, then we lose it, then we gain it. As you can see, we're just about leveling off there, so it's very hard for us to keep the momentum. This is our math. This is math from, this is at the end of last year, this was June 2014, this was our proficiency. We came back in September, and this is where our students were. And just a little piece of advice I'd like to just share and hear, it's information, not advice, is that at the, our kindergarten students, our incoming kindergarten students, we have nine percent of them, uh, that are proficient with reading behaviors. This is also math, this is for second and third grade. Second is the yellow, third is the red. As you can see, we, we grow them, and then we dip down, and we grow them, and then we dip down again. So what are, this is what our data shows. Our students respond positively to our instruction during the school year, but the growth is not sustainable due to significant summer loss. And this is, once again, our rationale for year-round. And with the, uh, transformation model, it talks about, uh, as one of the requirements for that is operational flexibility and looking at sustainability. And that's what our board and our school needs to think about, is what we're going to do to provide the support for these children at Snipes Academy. Uh, another rationale is to, it would be a decrease in the discipline referrals, because we would have that continuity with our students, because we not only teach reading and math and science and writing, but we also teach behaviors. And, uh, I'd like to share with you our journey for how we've come to get to this point with our presentation. I believe it was last January, February, Dr. Markley had mentioned at a school, at a principal's meeting, that if we were interested in year-round, uh, that we needed to, uh, work with our staff and come back to you all with that. So I went back to the school improvement team, and we reviewed our data, very similar to what we had here. And our school improvement team voted yes, a hundred percent, for pursuing this. So then we had to come up with what's next, what do we need to do? So we reviewed our data, we came up with brochures, flyers, we did a, a bulletin board in our front gallery walk, conversations with parents, members of the community, and we conducted surveys. These are the different ways that we communicated with parents last, uh, spring, and all the way through September of this year. We had our different star nights, our star nights are students', teachers', and relatives' nights. We, uh, we had the pancakes with pastors, uh, some of our teachers wanted... We, we had the pancakes with pastors. Some of our teachers wanted to organize that, so we had that in the summer. Had a great turnout for that. So those, some of our pastors came back in and read with students in the library this summer, and so we want to keep them involved. But they were able to talk with their congregation about how our students needed some continuity with their education. These are the results of our parent surveys. We tried different surveys. We did the Connect Five. As a matter of fact, that was one of the highest percentages for the agreements. That was the 65 percent last spring that we had with our survey. We did paper surveys in February and in April, and then we did a final parent survey in September of this year. We had them completed at curriculum night in September, and we also sent surveys home with students. And the result of that was 85 percent of our families responded yes for year-round education.
I reminded the Board that threshold, when we talked to principals last year, was 80-80 rule. 80 percent of your staff, 80 percent of your community is a threshold for looking for going year-round.
We had 83 percent of the staff. I think I forgot to put that in there, but 85 percent of our parents. But that was after we, you know, at the beginning, it was 60 percent. They're going on just what they knew about year-round education. Then we started giving them the data and sharing it in our PTA, not PT meetings, but our star nights. And it was very convincing when you look at the data. So as part of our transformation process, we would like for you all to consider year-round education for the children at Snipes Academy of Arts and Design, because we value what we are doing at Snipes Academy for our instruction, and we just feel like this would be a step in the right direction for us. So my question is to you, is how would you vote on that ballot? This was the last ballot that we gave to our parents in September.
You will see this at the January meeting as an action item. Next year would be a planning year, just as we've done for Snipes. They're in their planning, I mean, for Sunset. They're in their planning year this year. So it would not take place next year, but it would take place the following year, after a year of planning and training, which works out well because next year's the last year for their grant. So we can use that grant to really kick into the training part prior to them opening up.
I do have a couple of questions, actually, three questions.
Yes, and I have a team that I would like to bring up too, because they might be able to offer a different perspective as well. So I have Teresa Connolly. She is my SAM, my school administrative manager, and my assistant principal, Rachel Alessandro, assistant principal. Linda Dunn, instructional coach for three through five, and Sharon Dellinger, a third-grade teacher, and she was also sit chair last year. So we're here if you all have any questions.
I do have one question.
I mean, I'm, I-
Ms. Eastdip, I think Lisa-
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize.
Ms. Dunn. Ms. Dunn taught my oldest daughter kindergarten a long time ago. My first question was, when you mentioned the 85 percent of parents, was that 85, have you reached? How many parents have you reached? Was that 85 percent yes, 85 percent of your parent body? Can you, can you clarify that?
Well, that's why we surveyed a lot of different times in a lot of different ways, because it's, sometimes it's very difficult to reach some of our parents. We've ranged, every time we surveyed, it was over 50 percent. And I think one of the ones was up to 67 percent, I believe, of the parents that we were, of the ballots we were able to get back.
So, but you, you don't know if you had, you didn't have duplicates then?
We, we don't know that. Some, because we sent home with every child, and so that's, sometimes we had parents sign them so that we could ask, you know, answer any questions that they may have. So it's, it'd be very difficult to survey 100 percent of them.
So we don't, you don't-
So we don't know what percentage of the population you actually surveyed? So 85 percent of the number of people that were surveyed?
Let me just explain, because what, what we're talking about is each time we surveyed was kept separate, so we didn't lump it all together-
Right.
-and get 85 percent. Each one was separate. So...
So of the final parent survey in September where you say the result was 85 percent, how many parents, what percentage of your parent population was polled during that survey?
We, we did, I looked at two different sets of numbers. K-5, I think, was, and I'm sorry I didn't write that down, but I think it was like 58 percent. And then the K-4, we had, because we also wanted to look at the people who would actually possibly benefit, was even higher, and that was the 68 percent that Cindy was talking about.
What, what would be the plan if there is somebody, if there are parents that, that do not wish to have the-
Just as we're doing at Sunset. Gregory's next door is a choice school, so that would become their choice school. They wanted to opt out of that.
Okay. And about the, what about the cost of the conversion to year-round?
There actually isn't, because it's the same number of days. Teachers are still on a 10-month schedule. The money they might have used for summer sessions, for a fast start, then could roll into remediation on the intercessions.
Okay, so it would be basically a zero cost?
It's basically a wash, yes.
Okay.
See, that, I think that's the biggest problem with year-round. Most people just don't understand. You know, I heard a parent say one time when I think middle school Danny Shavot was considering this, and I saw him on the news, and a parent said, "No, I don't want my kid going to school year-round." You know, I want him in the summer, but he thought, yeah, he just didn't understand.
Now, there may be, and I won't speak for, there may be some costs related to transportation because of the way that some of the buses are using, but I wouldn't anticipate that being a large impact.
I remember Sunset Park was, Sunset Park converted some of their afternoon money to, to kind of make it a wash. Now, are you going to continue the extended day, or are you going to eliminate that?
We will continue adding the 15 minutes on to our instructional day.
Okay.
And I would like to say another thing about the surveys. When we survey our parents, we do perception surveys frequently in our school, and the turnout for that was just about the same as the turnout for what we had here. And our parent perception surveys are really good. Our parents like what we are doing. We are, you know, 96 percent for about everything in agreement that we're doing, which is good. So when you're looking at the number of parents that we can survey, the number of parents that respond, it's the same.
When Ms. Talbert started, a parent night, there might have been 30, 40 folks. And you look at now, and they're pulling in hundreds of parents, which is a real credit to what those folks have done in terms of the community outreach. This has always been a tough community to get to come to school. And to get a 65, 50 to 60 percent response rate on a survey is where they were four years ago, a huge, huge improvement.
Mr. Higgins?
My only question, every time we see, and I don't have a problem with year-round. Please understand this. But one of the, one of the motivating factors for year-round is remediation for students during the intercession period. I, I just want to make, ask you, I know you're not in your planning stage yet, but the other schools have a very difficult time getting students to come during that three weeks, for even a week, for remediation. Do you have any thoughts about what you would do to encourage students who maybe need remediation to come for maybe a week during that three-week intercession?
We would look at that the same way we're looking at our after-school program, trying to keep 80 children that are at risk, that weren't successful in the classroom or on their EOG scores, to stay for another hour and a half is a challenge. And getting staff to stay with them is also a challenge, and when you have 80, you're looking at a lot of staff. So that's why we revamped our after-school program, to make it more attractive and more meaningful and to tie in our arts integration. And that's one of our plans that I believe I had in the PowerPoint, that we would try to implement some of that arts integration and tie that into the reading and math remediation. It's very, it's very difficult right now to look at the read-to-achieve and what's happening in the third grade because most of our students participate in the Harvard's Read Program. We don't have that this year. So even our read-to-achieve, if that continues to stay in place, we're going to still continue and be remediating a lot of students, a lot of third graders.
Any other questions?
Can I just add that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there are two schools that have the year-round. I think it's Cottington and Eaton, and the population of the parents are different. So maybe that the intercessions during that time, they're taking their children on vacations and doing a lot of things, whereas we have a very high percentage of attendance rate. So I think a lot of our students would come to those sessions, just based on attendance and based on our, our parents do anything to get our kids to school. So I think that that's, that's a big difference between, between the year-round schools that are currently versus ours. It would be interesting to see what happens with Sunset.
I have a question for you. You, you had said 85 percent of the folks you talked with were supportive. What was the common denominator of the 15 percent that didn't respond positively? What was their primary concern?
There were two, I think. One was daycare, and another was many of our children go up north for the, for the summer to stay with relatives, and they would probably miss that opportunity. But once we shared data, and I've talked with so many parents, and when you explain that to them and explain to them that this is the foundation for their children, they really have come on board and are looking forward to the possibility of year-round.
Our, our school improvement team did discuss that, you know, why some people would not want that. So we tried to address that in each of our meetings and parent sessions, and in some of the newsletters that we had sent out.
I think childcare generally is an issue, but it looks like that would, in the summer, that this would be a benefit to the parent, as far as childcare, I would think.
But it, it was also that some of their siblings had a, what happens in middle school?
Right.
So what happens if their siblings are in a middle school and then they're, you know, elementary school? So maybe a middle school looking further, so they would be on the same calendar. That was a question.
Yeah, different calendars. That's always a problem. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Very good presentation. Thank you.
Can you ask the remaining staff to stand so we can recognize them?
Yeah, the staff from your school, Ms. Talbert, if they would like to stand, we would like to see who all's here with you, and we appreciate it. Thank you. You don't have to rush off.
Item 12 on the superintendent's report, item A, process of naming new elementary school. Dr. Markley?
All right. We are going to be building a new elementary school in the northeast. Should be closing on property within the next week related to that. So the question becomes naming of that piece of property. There is a policy in place, which is the attached appendix here. I would suggest or recommend that, I'd like to put on our website a suggestion box where somebody could come in and suggest names for that school, leave it there for the next 30 days. And I would give you a list of what those suggestions were. If they didn't match the policy, we would obviously toss, scratch them from the list, but as a way to solicit public input into naming the school.
And where are you going to put the suggestion box?
It'll be on the front page of the website.
And will the policy be there so people, when they come up with names, they'll see?
Good suggestion. We will include that as well. So just, if there's no, if there's no objection to that, I will talk to Don, and we'll get that up, and it'll be up for 30 days.
Any concerns or any? Okay, thank you. Item 13 on the consensus items, item A, personnel, appendix D, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions?
I have a question, Dr. Wellmers, and you may have to defer to Dr. Smith. But you have nine service resource managers listed?
Yes, ma'am.
And the sites are, it just says instruction and academic accountability. So can you explain the role of the manager and the sites?
They're essentially part-time after-school teachers. There's a requirement that they pass a basic after-school component with training, CPR, first aid. Average pay is about $1,152 an hour, and they're used after-school. A lot of them are students at UNCW who are majoring in teaching and working in our schools after, after hours. So it's, it's a part-time job.
So how, how are they assigned to the different schools? Because you didn't have specific sites.
Yes, ma'am. They are assigned based on the needs of the school within our stay program. So depending on the number of students at each of the high schools or the middle schools where they're offering stay, they may receive two tutors, and they go in at different times. And then some folks work at more than one site. So it may be someone who might work at Murray Middle School, but then also work at Myrtle Grove Middle School as well in our stay program.
And who coordinates all of this?
Ms. Jessica Elliott.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Item B, budget amendments, appendix E, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I request the board's approval of these amendments, and just wanted to mention that this does include the budget to establish the budget for the bond program.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments or questions?
I'm not 100 percent clear. Would you feed me a little more information?
Sure. We've included the, there's four amendments here, the State Public School General Fund, capital outlay, and then our other restricted, like, small donation and grant fund. But included in the capital outlay fund, we are setting up the budget for the bond, the $160 million bond program, in accordance with the way that it was, all the projects that were listed in the referendum.
Okay, so that's essentially what you're doing here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Item 14, any old business?
No old business.
Thank you. At this time, before we get to our new business, we'll take a recess and, a short recess.